Okay, good evening. It's Tuesday, August 30th, and we're going to call the public portion of our meeting back in session at 7:03, but I'd like to start by rising to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91A3B and C, and I'm wondering if the board has any motions? I'd like to entertain.
Make a motion to close the minutes for the non-public session under RSA 91-A, co. 3, 2, under reputation until further notice of the board unless such minutes need to be disclosed.
Anybody want to second that?
Second it.
Seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the first thing I would like to do is, for those might notice, we have a new person up here with us, so we're very happy to introduce kind of the official coming-out of coming-out party that is of our new town administrator, Mark Andrews. We had a notice come out via email last week, but I wanted to give him just a couple of minutes to introduce himself and say hello. So, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be quick and throw you to the board and the audience here tonight. First of all, I want to say thank you to each of the members of the board, all of the department heads and staff. I've visited with most pretty much up to this point, starting last Tuesday. Just wanted to say thank you to each and every one that has extended themselves in their expertise and knowledge to me personally to move along. Just a little bit of a background, grew up in Lawrence and a few other staff has as well here, and also we have, I lived in Havel most recently up to 2018 in the Bradford section, and I basically have had, my family has had a very strong commitment to public service. We find that my brother is a former police officer in Lawrence and family have worked in the public sector, so I was brought up in that realm, if you will, to understand that really giving back and making a difference in community is important. And that's really why I'm here with you, and hopefully we'll be able to move along. I graduated from the University of Lowell with a teacher's degree. At a time that teachers, it's like this comes in cycles, that there were no teaching jobs, so I had to use my background in finance and administration. Received a master's degree in public administration from Suffolk University, where I teach part-time from time to time, and also found that to be very helpful to me in my career path. So I think whether it was working as a town administrator in various communities in the Commonwealth, now I, and I looked when I worked in Havel as their first economic development and planning director, I'm sure Jim can understand this, really the two intersect, the planning of the town going forward with the master plan, also looking at economic development opportunities that would afford us to build a commercial industrial base to some degree. And I think working along those lines with all of the community groups and the committees, I see members of various commissions and committees that do yeoman's work, I think makes a huge difference, and so I'm here to be helpful and to be open and to work responsibly with the board.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
And you'll notice Jim Doggett's, oops. And Jim Doggett's covering for Diane this week, so we appreciate his help. So, following, everybody knows Jim, we won't make Jim do an introduction, but, so following along on the agenda, under B is the ARPA EOC update. Trish?
Okay, so a couple of things about update. We had a very productive meeting, and in addition to Joe Simone, who went out and purchased binders for us because we keep getting more and more stuff, the U.S. Treasury added new guidelines, they're only 168 pages, so the little binders that I originally bought aren't working anymore, so we got to have new ones. So he bought the binders, he printed out labels so that we all have copies. So we did make a motion to pay or reimburse Joe $48 for the binders he bought, just so that you guys know, we've done that and submitted it to the bookkeeper. Everyone was in favor, no negatives. But in addition to that, see, he stepped up to the plate, we also voted for him to be vice chair of the ARPA committee, so he now has a new role. If Joanne's listening, or his wife's not supposed to know, so, you know, we'll keep it low-key. Did I get you in trouble, Joe? Yeah, there you go, caller. So as far as our business goes, here's what's going on. The Board of Selectmen approved the fire department stipings that were recommended at the last meeting, and the breakdown was 13 will be receiving $2,485.71, 5 will be receiving $1,242.86, and any of those that were not eligible because of their hire date will be eligible in December, and we'll review that again in December and bring it to you. We discussed recreation needs, so some of this, Matt, maybe you can expand on, but the ARPA committee spoke to our new maintenance man and advised him that the work he's doing down at Granny Park, or if he does anything at the beach, can be covered under our ARPA funds, so I've instructed him to save any bills he has, any receipts, and even if it gets paid because he had to use the town card, or, oh, I was going to say Nancy's card, or Mark's card, to save those receipts, and we will reimburse wherever it came from, also his labor, so the bookkeeper will know when she sees his time card, if it says ARPA, that she knows to give me a copy. And he's right now currently, I think, working on the dugout, and if there's other things that he needs to do, he and I talked about roofs and other things, I'm sure he's going to let you and the committee know. We also discussed the fact, so the recreation committee gave us their wish list, if you will, and one of the items on the wish list was woodchips needed for Granny Park, and after much discussion, we decided to kind of put that on hold until we talked to Mike Povero or whoever, because the intent is to expand that parking lot at Granny Park, going 20 feet into the tree line, and then at that point, you know, we may need, I don't know, asphalt, I don't know what we'll do, but it seems premature to get woodchips now until we finish what we're doing down there. So I will talk to Mike Povero and see if he has any recommendations as to the next steps, and that is also ARPA money. It will cover any of the labor for anyone we hire down there, expanding that parking lot, cutting the trees down, asphalt if that's necessary.
20 feet into the hill or 20 feet?
Into the hill.
Into the hill.
Yeah, towards the conservation land. So we went down conservation, we did, you know, a site walk, this was actually a year ago, we went down and looked at it to see how far we could go and not be near the wetlands, so it's about 20 feet.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Good thinking. The feasibility, if we could use ARPA funds to purchase a woodchipper so that we could produce our own woodchips for the park.
So here's the only thing, I'll just say really quick because I don't want to belabor this, is.
Sure.
So the woodchips are a special type of woodchip for the fall zone, so they're pretty much brand-new right now, and they're good for like three years or something like that, so it was brought up.
Chemically treated.
Chemically treated, yeah.
Right.
So it was brought up as, you know, when we need some, can we use funds now so when we need them again in two years, we can purchase them, so it's not something you need very often, but you do need a specific fall zone certified.
And we have to be cautious about, it's a great idea, but we have to be cautious about using woodchips that aren't chemically treated because we can be bringing in bugs, and we know all these things that are coming from everywhere, and it's sometimes transferred in the woodchips, so we do have to be careful. To answer your question, we probably couldn't get away with that. If it was for the police or fire EMS, pretty much whatever they need, they can get with ARPA funds. Other things, it has to be, somehow I have to tie it into COVID, and I don't know how I could tie in a woodchipper to COVID. Could get tricky, but we'll keep that in mind, okay?
Well, I was thinking of that as a dual purpose, because then we could use it down at the transfer station.
Right. We talked about it down there as well. Yes, you're right.
Always thinking.
Yeah, great minds, think alike. So the other things that recreation wanted, we're all going to go down and take a look, but one of the things that the ARPA committee has requested, and I don't know if Matt, you can let Pat know if you want me to email her, would like an inventory of what they have for supplies. That's going to give us a better idea, because we talked at their meeting about life jackets, life buoys, all these other things, picnic tables. It would be great to know what they have, what's in rough shape, so that we can, on our list, since we know we can get it covered, see what we can order well before the prices go up, because every day I think they go up, I'm not sure, but an inventory would help us in determining whether it's for Granny Park, the beach, for activities they're doing, signs that they might need, whatever, so that inventory would be very helpful, okay? Transfer station, we discussed a lot about the transfer station, so we've been looking at generators. I'm going to read my report so that I don't get off-track here, so we've got quotes for generators, we've got, I want to say four quotes. It's extremely important. For those of you that don't know or weren't around during the 2009 ice storm, once we lost power in town, and we lost it for 12 days, for anyone that was here remembers what we went through. One of the worst things that happened is the transfer station basically got shut down. Their generators weren't firing, people were home and their food was spoiling, they were bringing it down in bundles, we had thrown all over the ground because the hoppers weren't working, we had rodents and critters like you would not believe because we had no generators to keep those hoppers moving. So it is important that we do this, not to mention because of COVID, and obviously I'm going to tie it into COVID, and without violating HIPAA, we've had multiple people that have come down with COVID, and unfortunately, for any of you that have been down there, we have employees that work there, I don't know, 11-hour shifts in some cases, they have no water to wash up, so, you know, put yourself in their shoes, you're working, you're handling people's garbage, rubbish, things explode all over your body, all over your hands, maybe you thought to wear gloves, but then again, what you were touching probably shouldn't have bothered you, excepting something was in it that shouldn't have been in it, and there you go. And then heaven help you, you then want to go eat with not being able to clean up or sanitize, and forget it if you're looking for the restroom. So all these things happen without running water, so it really would be important for us to have not only a generator, but water and septic. For the generators, we want it large enough to be able to run the current utilities that we have down there, and maybe room to expand if we want to, if they want to get another hopper at some point in time. I don't want to violate our purchase policy, so I know we, or you amended our policy for ARPA guideline, for ARPA funds, that we could spend up to $20,000 without making it with your approval and without making it a sealed bid. Unfortunately, what we've got, and there's different horsepower involved here, we've got prices, let's just say they're under $35,000, I'm not going to say what it is again in case you guys decide to go out to bid. So because we've got these quotes, we're not done with our research. We've actually got to talk to an electrician, and we talked about Kingston Electric, because he does so much here in town, to have him look at what we've been given so that we know, apples for apples, is this what we need, is this going to run it? None of us have the qualifications to make those decisions. So we're going to talk to an electrician, and maybe by our next meeting, come back to you and see what you want to do with the generator, and if, in this particular case, you want to expand that $20,000 ceiling to something else, or do you want to leave it like it is and go out for a sealed bid? I'm going to throw that back into your hands so you can decide how you want to handle it. The second part of the transfer station is, again, the running water, which I just touched on. So we have, again, talked to a lot of people, we've talked to engineers, we've talked to septic, we've talked to well people. We haven't got, again, we've got rough quotes, but again, we need electrician to look at what we need to, and an engineer, not an electrician, sorry, an engineer to figure out what exactly we need, where it's going to go. So we'll update you on this at your next meeting, we might have something more concrete. Our first plan would be to get an engineer with the costs in design and bring that to you. ARPA will cover design costs and engineering costs, if this is a road that you guys decide that you want to go down, okay? So that's for the next meeting. Security needs, ARPA committee discussed the invoice from Seaco Security to install four doors, key scan access control panel, and install keypad and electric lock on the electrical room door, the bay door, office door, the bay training room door, and the EMS door, along with the electrical room. These things weren't done in the past, we didn't have the money, you know, no surprise there, but because this is our emergency operating center, the state requires that that facility be secure during an emergency, and for those of you that participate in the Seabrook Drill, you understand how that goes. The doors get locked and nobody better come in. Those doors can't be locked, so these key spans are going to be for those four doors. We already have a contract with this company, so we didn't look at any others because they're already doing the security on the rest of the keypads that we have. Their total amount, including labor and materials, was $7,144. The ARPA committee is looking for approval by the Board of Selectmen to hire Seaco Security for this job using the American Recovery Plan Act funds so that it won't impact the taxpayers because this is the grant money that we are approved for. If you decide to approve, they're looking for 50% down and then 50% upon completion. I apologize that I didn't get this to you before the meeting, I did email you along with the requisition, I also made copies of the requisition, if you decide you want to go forward, I can give it to you so that you can sign it tonight. How do you feel? Do you, how do you feel about that? Did you want to vote on it, or do you want to wait till you get all the information for the next meeting and then vote on it for the next meeting?
So I'm forwarding this right now to the bookkeeper, right? I don't think.
Okay.
They have a copy of it, right? And BOs secretary, what's the rest of the board think about this for tonight?
Well, you said we're already doing business with these people, so they're reliable, good work.
Yes.
Quality work.
And they're under the $20,000. We really, I mean, all the push buttons at the fire station already, and all the exterior doors are already done by these people.
Right.
And when we need them to come in to change codes or do something, they do come in and change codes if we have to, or, I'm trying to think some of the other stuff they do. Charlie, do you know? No, it's just the keypads right now, I think that's all they do. I think that's our contract. Yep.
So I'll make a motion to approve the ARPA's proposal for the upgrade of the keypads in access to the fire station for the amount of $7,000?
$144.
$144 to said company.
Anybody want to?
I'll second that, even though I'm on the ARPA committee.
No, that's fine. So the only thing I would add is, let's just, let's not make it a habit of getting it right before a meeting.
Yes.
But I think, I think this is kind of a no-brainer for what we've needed for a long time, so.
Right.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Did you want a copy so that you all can sign it while you're here?
Uh, yeah, let's do that.
And then once everyone's signed it, scan it to me.
And I'm just looking at this, but it looks like all the information is here, Kim, but let us know if the, or let Trish know if that's not the case.
Okay. Okay, as I continue, technology and security, so the ARPA committee will be visiting a firm in Chelmsford on September 7th to view security cameras for all the town building exteriors, as well as Granny Park and the town beach. This is considered an upgrade in technology and is completely covered by ARPA. We've had a few situations where if the cameras were better than they are, we would have been able to determine either who was victimized or how the property was injured. Anyone that wants to come is, not the public, by the way, but any Board of Selectmen member that wants to come to view this equipment, you can feel free to come on September 7th in Chelmsford. If you're interested, I'll forward you the address, and we have to be there by 10:30. And I do need to know how many people might be coming, so I'm tossing that out there. Our printer upgrade to technology, so the ARPA committee reached out to multiple printing companies, looking for consumer reviews, we've done a lot of research, Mr. Doggett has had a lot of input, and we selected a company out of Havel, a local company. This is a large printer that will take 36-inch, it's on a roll, which is what Mr. Doggett would prefer instead of the sheets. It's color, it's a scanner, a printer, it's a copier, it will do an 8x11 or it will do a 36-inch. I did talk to Diane about this, she said it's something that if we wanted other departments to use it because they wanted to upload things into the clouds, that Armon Technology, our IT people, you know, that's already doable, so that's not a problem. The printer company that we're recommending, and again, you'll get the requisition and the invoice, we don't have an invoice yet, I've got it on an email, but you'll have it for your next meeting. It's an HP Design Jet, T like Tom, 830, it's a large inkjet, 36-inch printer scanner, it's $7,250 minus an instant rebate of $650. We got four other quotes from other companies, but this is the one that we thought was the best and it's local. We also checked consumer reviews and got a raving review by Dennis Quintell, who uses them all the time, so that's said a lot to us. So for your next meeting, you'll have the requisition and the invoice, and I'll do it ahead of time, so you'll have it before your meeting. I had blonde-scented moments this week, you know? Portable filters for Town Hall, a lot of research we did on this, and the ARPA committee wants to recommend, again, and you'll have all this for your next meeting, but we have an invoice to purchase 10 Molecule portable filters for Town Hall and the library. There's five larger ones and five smaller ones. We may end up needing more, this is just the beginning. If you remember when we first started talking about this, we talked about, you know, the fire station, the police station, all their offices, this doesn't include that, we're going to start here, we're at the point where we're going to be shutting windows, we're going to be, you know, tied up inside these buildings, so we need to get these filters. They come from, it's called Molecule, and they'll be coming from San Francisco. So for your next meeting, the cost will be $5,390, and I'll get you that, I have an invoice, and we'll get you the requisition for your next meeting. Our EOC report, the local equipment purchase program, so I wrote a grant with the help of the fire department through this program, this is not ARPA, this is completely different, and you've heard us speak about this in our past meetings, and I think, Charlie, you brought it up at one of our meetings, but we need to officially acknowledge that we got this money. It's the local equipment purchase program, it is a grant, and we were approved for $49,981. It has been deposited into our main operating account, and it's earmarked for the Stryker stretcher. This is an amazing piece of equipment that we never would have been able to purchase through our budget, but we need our minutes to reflect that we've got the money, where it is, and what it's going to be. And again, it was a grant, not a reimbursement, and it's not ARPA. And is this lastly, am I on my, oh, I'm on my last paragraph.
Trish, I don't know if you know, but the deputy fire chief, he has already put the order in.
Put it in? Good, good. So this, one of the things that was interesting about this, when we were doing our research during this grant, we contacted not only other departments, but other, our primics insurance, and this actually prevents workman's comp injuries because of the way it lifts the bodies, bodies, oh, that sounds awful, people. So in the long run, this is going to be a really good thing for us. The EOC report, the last piece is, as you know, COVID guidelines have loosened up, that being said, in order to protect our staff and all our buildings that work in all our buildings, I'm going to tell you right now, if you're sick, stay home, we don't want you. Many of your business can be done online, when COVID first started, we were pushing that, so we're just going to say, you know, if you're sick, please don't come in and infect the rest of us. If somebody in your family is sick and you have to come in, please wear a mask, even if you have no symptoms, just to protect everybody that's here. The bottom line is, if you're sick, Mary Jo said it very well, we don't want you, stay home. And that's that. And that's a quote from Mary Jo.
Oh, thank you.
Wait a minute, Trish.
You expect me to?
Yes.
Are you asking the board to update any on the?
On our ceiling, on our purchase policy for ARPA funds? You know, it's interesting because with the, what we're doing with the generators and probably what we're going to be doing with, I imagine, the security cameras, we also have a company, I did mention this to Matt at one point, that we've spoken to that wants to come in and talk to us about upgrading our website, and this company is, that's not going to exceed our limit, but it's another thing that is going to make us easier to view by residence, get the word out for whether it's dinners or events, or the planning board might need something, or ZBA or conservation looking for help in the bush farm. So there are things, and the Granny Park, the expansion of Granny Park, that we think might go over that ceiling, we already know the generators are going to go over it, and we know the septic and the well is, you know, probably if we take them individually, it won't go over it, but I don't know. So is it something that we should revisit, or do you want to do it case by case, raising that 20,000 ceiling limit?
So.
It's still going to come back to the board.
Right, exactly.
Right.
So it doesn't really matter, whatever ceiling, I put no ceiling on it, to be honest with you, because we're going to bring it in, and we're going to give it to the board, and the board's going to make a decision.
Right, so even, like, if you had something well below the ceiling, it still comes to the board, right?
Oh, no matter what, yes.
Everything comes to the board.
Exactly.
Everything comes to the board.
So, I guess, so what you're trying to say is, if you had something for $21,000 right now.
Right.
There'd be extra red tape.
We've got to go out to bid and time, and think about the time we need to publicize it, put it out there. By the time it comes back, what we're seeing happening is the prices have gone up.
Yeah.
So it's time-sensitive almost, that we're, that we don't have to take, say, 30 days' worth of time to publicize, go out for bid, then open up our envelopes at our next meeting that then we'd bring to you to open up at your meeting, but there's a lot of dominos that we have to.
So essentially, all you're asking us really to do is to waive the bidding process.
For just the ARPA.
Just ARPA funds.
Just for the ARPA thing.
Yeah.
Because that money's coming out of ARPA.
Right.
Not affecting taxpayers.
Right, so if we waive the bidding process, you can come to us, we can yea or nay it, and then get right on top of it.
And waiving, and certainly Kim can correct me if I'm wrong or looking at this the wrong way, for my involvement, when I sat in your seats and when I helped do Kim's job, the audit committee would probably want us to have an amount so that it's not like willy-nilly. So, I mean, I don't know, do we raise it to 50 so that we've got an amount, or maybe, is that not necessary? Kim, I'm going to ask for you.
No, I'm thinking right now, we already raised it to 20.
20, yeah.
And I'm wondering if we should just have it as a case-by-case basis, and if we need to come back to reevaluate and do that then, because we do need some sort of control.
Right.
Because I think what you're saying, Kim, is we could say right now, we could say the ceiling for the generator is $30,000, and we could say the ceiling for the well is whatever, right?
Right.
Rather than saying the ceiling for everything.
Yes.
Do we want to do that?
Well, you can't say $30,000 for the generator because it might be $35,000.
Well, you know, whatever fits.
Case by case, right.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure, after talking to McKinney, we're looking at probably $15,000 on a well, and roughly you could be looking at 20 on the septic. on a well and roughly you could be looking at 20 on the septic, possibly.
The thing is, as numbers start coming in, you'll have a better picture as to what a certain project is going to cost. I think just doing a general blanket, increasing that limit again, is not going to give you the whole set that you should have.
I think we should just roll out the case by case.
So timeout, somewhere Diane is really mad at us because Kim's not in front of a microphone. Like, I don't know where Diane is, but she can sense. So just for the people at home, so what Kim is saying, perhaps a blanket change is not the thing, but more of a strategy where it's case by case. So do we want to table this until we get more information on these projects? Because I'm, I'm okay with it myself. I like the idea of not having the blanket thing, but having, for this project, we know we're going to be, you know, what's everybody think?
I think case by case would be the way to go.
And then when I do the presentation to you, ahead of time, you're going to have what our research, what it is. And so if it looks like it's going to be, I don't know, $32,000, let's say hypothetically for something, maybe it's the generator, let's say. You know, during that meeting, ahead of time, you'll see the invoice and then at that meeting, so it's in the minutes of the meeting, we could say, we're taking this as a case by case and it exceeds what we have in our purchase policy, but we're going to waive that for this particular thing. Something like that, so it's in the minutes for the auditors?
Yeah, I think that's what we need.
Okay. I hope that's not me, I'm sorry. Oh, so it's okay. Does that make sense then?
That makes sense.
Should we take that up at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll make sure that I get everything to you ahead of time so that you can review it and with a note, you know, a little cheat sheet note that, you know, I may be asking you to, you know, raise the ceiling for this particular thing.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish.
Trish, are you E-911?
Can you email me your report as a, as a doc?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
We have, next on the agenda, Trish, we have E-911 liaison, was that you? Trish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
E-911? Oh. I see that on the agenda.
Does that sound like it's not you?
It's not, no.
Okay. It's the board, so who, but who's making the request for the board? Is it the state, just coming from the state?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Cool, so do we have the previous names?
We have a hand up on an iPad.
Okay, iPad.
I have somebody with an iPad, who's on the iPad, who's.
Can unmute them if you want.
If they wish to identify themselves.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Alice Dunn. I live on Smith Connor Road. I am a resident in Nevada. I just wanted to let you know that there were several of us that had problems trying to get on to the meeting tonight. We couldn't get on until after everything was discussed at 7:35. So anything that was discussed before that has not been able, we have not been able to be part of it.
Okay.
Just for your information.
Okay, thank you. Jim, did you see any problems with the Zoom?
No, I admitted everybody as soon as they showed up.
I was not, I was not the only one. It's on Facebook that, yeah, other people have problems too.
Okay, so we do have a video. So if, if people want to go back and look at it, basically what we've done so far is the ARPA and EOC update, so that's all that's been done thus far. So the, the question remains, so the E-911, do we have, so basically they're looking for us to designate our liaisons for E-911, a primary and secondary, and I'm wondering if we have our previous roles, so we can base this one on the previous roles? We don't, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Sure.
It does, it does designate, it does say, depending upon the structure of the town or city government, that any of the following would fit into either the primary or the secondary, which would be Chairman of the Board of Selectmen or Town Council, Mayor, Town or City Manager, Town or City Administrator, or an authorized designee. So I think what we could do, and correct me if I'm wrong about this, Kim, we could, we could pull what, what has been on file and get that to the next meeting, make sure that this is a.
I couldn't find anything on the file.
You couldn't? Okay.
Yeah, I'm remembering this now. I think that sounds right, that I believe it was the Town Administrator was the primary. I'm not sure who the secondary would be, but we could, we could always put like, you know, Board Chair, because that changes yearly, so.
It changes.
What's everybody say? Does somebody want to make a motion to that effect, that not necessarily who we're putting in, but the, the roles so that it gets put in there?
Joe's got a question, man.
Joe, you have a question?
Yes, good evening, Joe Simone. I'd just like to make a suggestion, maybe the, the road agent should be put on that list because he kind of like is looped in, as soon as something goes on, he's looped in, he knows who to call, when to call, why to call and whatnot, he seems to get action on it, so you might want to consider him, sorry for volunteering your mic, but.
Right, but see, I don't think that's what this is. So this is, this is basically, if somebody, if somebody dials 911, the information that comes in is limited sometimes, so they want to know what address to go to. So if the, the perfect example is 8 Merrimack Road. Five years ago, 8 Merrimack Road didn't have the kind of sub addresses within 8 Merrimack Road and I remember Nancy had to give the E-911 what those were, so. So she had to basically talk to, I believe, probably to the Planning Board and, and people like that, so. So I, I think Michael thanked me, that I don't think it's, it's something, I think I helped him out of this one, I don't know.
So I'll make a motion that we use the Town Administrator as the primary and the Select Board Chair as the secondary for the E-911.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. So, moving right along. So for those who didn't know, September 13th is the New Hampshire State Primary Day. So I know Mary Jo had to leave, but, and I don't know if the moderator's on, it's not a big deal if he's not, but typically what happens in, is the Select Board has to have a quorum because it is a town meeting, so we just have to make the, make sure we have a quorum that day and if we don't, we can have Selectmen Pro Tems that can help us out if we need to sneak out for lunch and stuff like that. So, so Charlie is on the ballot, so Charlie is already there. So I do believe that for the purposes of the quorum, you count, is what I understand, but you don't count for signing at the end of the night, so. So I am going to be there probably like 7:30 to 6 o'clock, something like that. Bob, you?
I took the day off from work, so I'll be there for the day.
Awesome, and Mike?
Yeah, so I have standing meetings on, on that morning, but I will be there somewhere around noon on.
Okay, and the other key thing is primary setup. So what happens is we typically have, I always use the example of, of the Amish when they build a house, right? It takes the village of all the Amish get together and help build the house, so I believe, and I'll, I'll reach out to the moderator, but what we did last time, which was back in March, is I came to the fire station at like 9:00 AM on Monday and we had help from the Fire Department. Charlie, I think you were there too, right? Does that sound familiar?
No, I was not there.
You weren't, okay. So the Fire Department, the Highway Department was there, the transfer station is the most important piece there, they do it all the time, they kind of have the plan. And I believe our, when I last talked with Mary Jo, the, our new, is he still new? Our newer custodian is going to help with that, so I think we have the people, we just have to designate the time. So if, maybe Mark, you wouldn't mind reaching out to some of these folks?
Sure thing, happy to.
Just ask Mary Jo what her, she, she typically doesn't get involved with the setup as much as she does get with the day of, it's really the, the Town Moderator, Robert Dismelik, so you might want to reach out to him, I'll do the same and we should be in, in good shape.
Sure thing, Mr. Chairman, happy to.
Thank you. And then basically just encourage people to turn out, because it's usually a low turnout for the state primary, so.
Okay.
A lot of important things on the ballot, so. Anything else on the primary? I think that was it. And then we had, under E, we had an MS-1, looks like.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Sure, go ahead.
So the cover memo, basically, this is a summary of the inventory evaluation report that's pretty much driven by the Town Assessor, Chris Murdock, and basically what it is, is it, on the RSA 21-J34 is a summary of all the residential, commercial, industrial utilities. It's a roll-up. We checked with the DRA and they confirmed that the report is in fine form and so it's just a matter of the vote of the board to accept it and sign it and we'll get it to the state first thing tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you. Anybody want to make a motion to that effect? So I can make that one. I would move to adopt the DRA 2022 MS-1 Summary Inventory Evaluation of Valuation.
Second.
Charlie is seconding. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then it looks like F is the Timber Yield Tax Bill. Anybody want to talk to this one?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Go ahead.
So basically, this is driven by, this is.
No, we're here for Mark and then Joe's up. Go ahead, Mark.
So this is, this is driven by a form regarding the sale of timber at 64 Whittier Street and it's also, once again, created by the Town Assessor, Chris. So what it basically says, it was on also, it was on the Town Administrator's, on Nancy's kind of radar, if you will. You don't know until actually the, the form is completed and, and dropped off. I admit the list missed test of the Town Assessor and I would recommend positive action this evening.
Okay, Joe, did you have something you wanted to add? Something else? Okay, do we have?
We don't have the form.
Yeah, do we have the identification stuff on this Timber Yield Tax? I think, I think we have to have a.
We're supposed to have a form that we sign.
Form, yeah.
Yes, I have it in my folder, yes.
So if you, if you can pass it up, we can just look at that. While we're waiting on that, did you want to talk to the, was it the previous agenda?
The previous agenda item, I just had a question on the valuation, is there, is that a form that we're doing or something we already have? If we do, what is the valuation? Dollar, dollar amount? Or is there any dollar amount attached?
It's, it's a, it's, it's a summary of the inventory and valuation. We do it every year. I don't know if Mark's got it.
Yes, to you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Simone. It's a net valuation of all of the residential, commercial, industrial utilities. It also takes into account any changes in the exemptions for various classes, if you will, so it's a complete roll-up of the valuation of the town in summary form. Does that help you, Joe? And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to expound upon, from Mr. Simone and others listening, how does Trisha say it in TV land?
Yes.
Right, so we took a good hard look at this, I went back to 2021, very positive signs for the valuation of residential, if you will. Utilities were a little bit flat, but I think overall it's a positive sign as we start to build the fiscal 2020, the 2023 budget, the fiscal years combined, looking from 2021 to 2022, it looked fairly positive for the town, which was part of my report.
Right.
And this is the form.
I'm just going to pass these guys, the top part. There's the, if you were to make a motion, that's the lot number.
So we're going to make a motion.
Wants to see it before you. So I don't think we have to do an amount or name or anything like that, we just do the, the middle part there at the bottom.
The tax map.
Yeah. Timber Yield Tax 4.
The tax map and lot number 5-5-10-6 to collect the yield tax 2 of $1,169.56.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, thank you.
You want to sign it now?
Yeah, I might as well sign it while you have it there. All right, so we're on to other business and looks like Joe's got other business.
Good evening again, Joe Simone. Just have a couple of questions, looking for an update, number one, on the outside storage process or program, or will we stand with that? And number two, the situation with reference to Selectmen Foot. And on that issue, I think, I think there's a lot of questions that are still being out there, asked by people, they don't know what's going on, so I think the quicker we can get a resolution to that and move it forward, the better it will be for everybody and every department involved.
Yeah, so, so I'll speak on your first question, which, which I would ask it a different way because I call it kind of the records identification and management process because it, it might involve outside storage or it might not. We did have a meeting last week. It ended up just being me and the Town Administrator, or I'm sorry, the Town Clerk, as a lot of people are on vacation and stuff like that, so we're starting to get our hands around it and they're, we're going to ask probably for the Town Administrator's help with the people who have yet to give us the information we need. We're also going to publish a schedule, we got to work out our dates, it'll probably be, probably the first Monday of the month for a while, we'll, we'll publish a Records Management Committee meeting. So I don't know if it's going to happen, you know, every month, but at the beginning here, we might have to do that and then we'll publish minutes and stuff like that, so.
Hate to be a pain in the neck, but wasn't there a deadline that you asked these people to get all this information?
There was, yep.
And I'm going to say it again, if these people can't do the job, bring them before your board in non-public session and ask them if they want their job.
Yeah, and we might do that. We would, yeah. But if it's a non-public session, we're not going to be talking about it in public, right? Understood, yep. Understood, yep. And then the second question, anybody want to answer the second question? I have no update on the second question, to share, I should say that, I have no update.
There's, there's no update to share.
Yeah.
It is in progress.
It's taken too long.
We, we, this board cannot control outside state parties.
It's been made.
They, they've been made.
Anything else for other business? All right, the manifest, anybody want to launch into that, Charlie?
Move to sign manifest, vendor manifest dated August 30th, 2022, in the amount of $1,286,989.15, of which $1,225,661 is the September Sanborn Regional School District payment. $48 is covered under the ARPA for the office supplies, and $5,436.90 from ARPA monies for the deposits on the purchase of the fire boat.
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Move to sign cable revolving manifest dated August 30th, 2022, in the amount of
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign payroll manifest for pay period, August 14th through the 27th, 2022, with a pay date of September 1, 2022. Total payroll is $93,393.82, which includes $644.2 of the ARPA administrative costs, and $38,528.53 in stipends to the Fire Department employees.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Requisitions, none. Minutes moved to accept the non-public and public minutes dated August 16th, 2022, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept the non-public and public minutes dated August 22nd, 22, 2022, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any review of non-public session minutes for unsealing? Seeing as there're none, as there are none, move on to announcements. We, we said it's September 13th, 8 to 8, at the, at 8 Merrimack Road, we'll be voting in the state primary. Like to also note the, check local listings for September 15th for the tickets on sale for the Senior Old Home Day BBQ. As I said before, we're looking for local officials to help us cook and serve the food, so there's several of you I've already talked to that know where you'll be that night.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
And if you have a chef's hat, that's even better. And then on September, September 17th, 11 to 4, at Memorial School, will be Old Home Day, and a lot of great stuff, there'll be, signs are already up, and there'll be more communications on that stuff, but any other announcements? So our next meeting is September 20th, so hopefully everybody has a good Labor Day, because this is our Tuesday after Labor Day meeting. I'll entertain any motions, if anybody has any.
I'll make a motion that we close.
Who do you want, a second?
Second.
I had two seconds, one from Mike and one from Charlie. So all in favor?
Aye.
And have a good evening, everybody.